And that we're making all these really good lab reports and that we need to, um, we need to vote it down. We need to vote it down or say we're not going to do this. And then we refer to the law until you come up with something. And let us see a draft and see if it works.
Mind if I write that down?
Yeah, go right ahead. What's your view on this?
Ready to go, Rodney?
I don't have any problem.
City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tindham.
Here.
Alderman Grover.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Burris.
Here.
Alderman Fisk.
Here.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Here.
Alderman Wynn.
Here.
Nine to zero.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, October 8th, 2012, meeting of the Evanston City Council. The first agenda item is the mayor's public announcements. It is National Fire Prevention Week, October 7th through 13th. Chief Clyber, did you want to give us some tips on fire safety?
Thank you, Mayor Tisdale, Chief Clyber. Members of the council, Clerk Green, my first tip for the evening is if we can please just keep this aisle clear.[87.72][87.72](Laughter). I very much appreciate it. So, no blocking those doors, the exit doors. We kicked off Fire Prevention Week yesterday, actually. We had a very successful open house at all our fire stations where we had a lot of families come in and learn about fire safety at our fire stations. We're going to be in all the schools this week teaching fire safety. And the only other thing I really want to say about it is if everyone in this room and at home is watching, there's a couple things. Change the battery in your smoke detector. Make sure you have a smoke detector at every level in your house. Make sure it's working. Make sure you have a new 9-volt battery placed in it. We're going to be out passing 9-volt batteries out when we turn the clocks back in a couple weeks to commuters as they come off the L and the Metro. When we turn the -- we do turn the clocks back, right? Okay. So, we'll be there as well. And the other important point is make sure you have a working fire extinguisher in your house. ABC fire extinguishers. And you can go to Home Depot or your local hardware store and pick one up. Those are the two most important things to have in your home, except for sprinklers. And so, anyway, make sure you have a working smoke detector. Make sure it has a battery in it. And make sure you have a fire extinguisher in your home. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Alderman Wilson, did you have a comment to make?
I did.
Take over the mayor's time.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to make a couple of comments, but by virtue of the fact that we have an extraordinary number of people here on one particular item, and I, knowing what my intentions are with regard to the item, I just thought I would share that with the public in case that governs anybody's decision to stay up late or not. But it is my intention to request that the landlord licensing ordinance be referred back to staff and not have any action taken on that tonight. So, that's my intention, and I would be surprised if that --[227.01][227.01](Applause) I would be surprised if there was deviation from that. I'm going to add quickly that the city staff and a lot of people have put a great deal of time and effort into this. There are important issues and concerns that people have that are very legitimate and do need to be addressed in the long term and in the short term. I appreciate all of the time and effort that people have put in. All of us here as council members also appreciate all the correspondence and comments we've received from members of the public. We have heard what people have had to say, and we have spent the time to review the information, so that's appreciated as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Acting City Manager, do you have announcements?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have two announcements tonight. The first is from our Director of Health, Yvonne DeThomas, regarding Erie Evanston Health Center.
Good evening. Yvonne DeThomas, Director of Evanston's Health Department. Good evening, City -- our Mayor, Tisdale, Acting City Manager Lyons, City Clerk Green, and council members. I am ecstatic to announce that Erie Family Health Center is coming to the community.[303.02][303.02](Applause). But I would be remiss in mentioning that our Evanston Pediatric Dental Clinic has been open in this community in the Civic Center since 1967. And over the last two years, our fine staff, Dr. Andrenova, Anna Rena Taria, and Denise Cobb, have been instrumental in this transition process. They've been incredible practitioners. And I just wanted the community to know that because of their efforts to be effective and efficient and relevant in providing oral health care in this community, they increased the revenue double in the last two years and has improved and increased the practice. And so, Erie Family Health Center is acquiring a robust practice where we've treated at least three generations in our pediatric dental clinic. But the great news I wanted to share is that the Evanston Erie Family Health Center is opening on Monday, two weeks from today, October 22nd, here in the Lorraine H. Morton Civic Center. Our new health center will provide children and teen care, adult and senior care, behavior health services, and children's dentistry. As mentioned, they will acquire our current pediatric dental clinic. Prenatal care will come in sometime in the late summer. Erie does look forward to providing the community affordable and high-quality health care services right here in the Civic Center. For more information, if anyone is interested in making an appointment, the line is available 24 hours a day for appointments. You would call 847-666-3494. Again, that's 847-666-3494. Erie is excited to provide care in our -- on our premises, and we're excited to have them as a partner. Thank you.
Congratulations, Yvonne.
(Inaudible)
We're going to --
People might want to speak in any way.
I'd like to speak before I drop this in.[441.13][441.13](Laughter).
Please don't do that.[445.03][445.03](Laughter). Yes, we are -- the plan is to have citizen comment, but let the city manager finish.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I have one other announcement. Suzette Robinson is here to discuss composting at our local Jewel Stores. And she has a stand-in. I'm sorry.[480.13][480.13](Laughter).
No, I'm not Suzette Robinson, but thank you for the consideration, anyway. Jim Mayworm, Superintendent of Streets and Sanitation. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council Members, Clerk Green, Acting City Manager Lyons. With me tonight is John Dunzing from the Jewel Osco Corporation. He's going to give us a very brief presentation on some exciting food scrap recycling that the Jewel Stores in town are going to be doing. This is a program that Jewel Osco is leading the Chicago area in, and I think it's a very good news thing. So, John?
Appreciate it. Thank you for the opportunity to speak for a few minutes tonight. Again, my name is John Dunzing. I'm the Director of Environmental Sustainability for Jewel Osco. Just want to talk through a little bit about food scrap diversion. First of all, organics account for up to 60% of the weight by density in the traditional waste stream, so we're looking to divert that out of the system. The typical Jewel Osco diverts about 12,000 pounds or more per month in food scrap, which is a significant amount of food waste. Both currently, the Evanston Stores divert food to the Fresh Rescue Program through the Greater Chicagoland Food Depository. So, this is food that is unable to be donated, and it will go to then a composting program. We estimate a 288,000 pounds annually to be diverted from the landfill for those two stores alone, and that does not include the food pantry donations. Currently, we have 162 of our 179 stores diverting food scraps to compost, and we're very, very proud of that. We do have extensive training programs for our stores, as well as extensive videos and other hands-on training materials for our store teams to deploy this project. We'll be giving each store bins to collect materials with compostable liners. The bins will stay in the store at all times, except for on the day of service. They'll be placed outside to be serviced by our local vendors. The bins are inspected and put back into service if they're clean. If not, they're set aside and sanitized. High, very, very high levels of sanitation are required for this program. We'll be using compostable liners with bands, again, as an added safety sanitation element. We do provide our team signing for what is compostable, what is not compostable. And we will continue our market rendering programs, which follows the federal food pyramid, which says to feed the public first, feed animals second. So, the second outlet for our food will be going to a food rendering program for all of our meat, fat, and bone, and then the composting program. This gives you a visual of the process in action. On the upper left, you can see today, that's the landfill. That's where it used to go. Today, it goes into bins and is picked up by our hauler, and it ends up in windrow composting. And within about 90 to 120 days, it is just a beautiful, black-gold-rich nutrient compost. The majority of the materials from our market here will go either to Wakanda, to Midwest Organics, or to Waukegan, to the New Earth Facility. Did anybody have any questions?
Thank you very much. It's a wonderful program. City Clerk, do you have communications for us?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I just want to remind all the residents that tomorrow is the last day that you can register to vote. Early voting starts here on the 22nd and run through November 3rd. It'll be in Room 2200 here in the Lorraine H. Morton Civic Center. If you do want to register, then you will have to go to the Cook County -- you would have to go to the courthouse in Skokie to register, and you'd have to vote at the same time. So, tomorrow's the last day for registering for voting, and I would encourage everybody to get out and vote and use your right.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is citizen comment. Citizen comment is limited to 45 minutes at a council meeting, and I am very sorry to say that means that each one of you has about a minute and a couple seconds to speak. If someone has made the points you want to make, you can say that you agree with the previous speaker, and that would speed things along. I'm going to read the first four names, and please come forward and be ready to speak as soon as the person in front of you has stopped. First, Betty Payden, Tina Payden, Carla Sutton, and Jim Schummerhorn.
Could we turn the lights on?
Oh.
Are we turning up the lights to see the young?
My name is Betty Burns Payden. I live at 1122 Emerson Street. We've been living there since 1899. I'm -- black people always look young. Stop it.[793.63][793.63](Laughter). My great uncle built the house. He built two houses there. We've been there five generations. And, one, I got no notice from the City of Evanston about this ordinance, which is not due process, and you can ask your attorney, Ann Rainey, that that's not legal.[817.13][817.13](Laughter). I have no idea of what the ordinance is. I just get a notice from the realtor saying that they're going to fine me $7,000 if I don't do what the city says. And, one, I know the city is not a landlord, even though apparently the city thinks they're a landlord. You're not a landlord, and you're not my landlord. I've had --[845.94][845.94](Applause).
Betty?
We've had rental properties --
Betty, I need you to wrap up, so everyone will have a chance.
We've had rental properties since before I was born. We had one rental property that the city made us tear down. And the problem is, if you don't want a lot of lawsuits against you, you better clean up your ordinance and send people notice and send them the ordinance in order for them to tell you what's wrong with it.
Thank you.[876.82][876.82](Applause).
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Tina Payden, and I also live at 1122 Emerson Street. I am in objection to this ordinance. We already have a rental registration fee, and I'm not sure how you're doing about enforcing that, but you need to work on enforcing that. We're being taxed in so many times. We already have property tax. We have a federal fund tax, low-income tax, registration fee, and now the licensing fee. We don't have all this money for $26 per unit. And for a small business, you're trying to drive away the small-business owners here in Evanston that are trying to help other people have a nice, safe place to live here in Evanston. Also, you're trying to say that here in this ordinance, what about the tax or this fee or license for inspections for bed and breakfast? We just talked about bed and breakfast. They don't even have the same kind of restrictions, and they're the ones that need the same restrictions.
And I need you to wrap up.
I will.
Thank you.
They're the ones that need these enforced license for bed and breakfast because they have transient tenants, and we don't. Thank you.
Thank you.[970.69][970.69](Applause).
Good evening, Mayor Tisdale, and members of the city council. I'm speaking in opposition to the license agreement, and I'm coming from a different perspective. I'm very concerned that you're being, apparently, by elderly people in this community, as aiding gentrification. If your intent is to improve and maintain the quality of rental housing, you already have enough in your laws that is landlord adverse and tenant friendly. You need to look at your exemptions and concern yourselves with who will be adversely affected. Nothing in this license agreement will improve or maintain the quality of rental housing that you don't already have provisions for. And the last thing, when you remand this to the city council, I would also recommend that you revoke this license agreement immediately and no longer bring this up as a endeavor burden upon landlords and citizens of Evanston. Thank you.
Thank you.[1038.94][1038.94](Applause).
Good evening. I'm Jim Schummerhorn of Schummerhorn &amp; Company Property Managers. And for those of you who didn't attend the committee meetings, I did. And from my recall on the vote, it barely got through committee on a vote of four to three. Three of the votes for it were Alderman, if I remember correctly. So, this idea of this ordinance has come barely squeaked through committee with a vote, one vote deciding to get it through committee, and now it's here. And one of the best things I've heard about this possible licensing idea is the idea of sending it back to staff. So, I will make my comments end now because of the good idea I've heard of sending it back to staff and committee. Thank you.
Thank you.[1093.83][1093.83](Applause). Next is Barbara Blades, Mark Beam, Bernard Hammer, and Junad Riske.
Good evening, Mayor Tisdale, and committee members, council members. I've already written to you how I feel about this, so I'd just like to read you a statement from the City of Minneapolis website on this issue. Why licensed rental properties, they ask? One, to promote the health, safety, and welfare of the general public. Two, to assure preservation of the existing housing supply. Three, to help maintain property values. Four, to work toward eliminating substandard and deteriorating rental housing. And five, to maintain a living environment that contributes to healthful individual and family living. Thank you.
Thank you.[1155.83][1155.83](Applause).
Mayor Tisdale and members of the council, my name is Mark Beam. I've only lived in Evanston for 30 years. I currently live in the Fireman's Park neighborhood where my wife and I own our own home, and I speak in favor of the ordinance. It's a reasonable and important mechanism by which the city can better achieve compliance with the city's ordinances that are applicable to rental properties. Doesn't create new regulations, but it provides a mechanism for enforcing the regulations that exist. There should be no real doubt that the objective of enforcing our residential regulations is a legitimate and important one for the City of Evanston. The proposed licensing ordinance promotes that objective in a measured, procedurally-clear and effective manner, one that will work to the mutual benefit of tenants, landlords, and neighbors, all of whom share an interest in safe, sound, and lawfully-operated housing. If I were to suggest revisions to the proposed ordinance, I would probably make it stronger in some respects, but I'm not here to argue for more revisions. The ordinance is a product of careful consideration by a special committee --
I'm sorry, I need you to wrap up. Please be quiet, everybody.
-- that included members who brought to the process a wide range of perspectives and who contributed an enormous amount of time and energy to this task, for which we owe them a debt of gratitude. But the committee not only represented a wide --
I do need you to wrap up.
-- range of perspectives and invited and heard others. The resulting ordinance is, to coin a phrase, fair and balanced. Planning and development recognize that and would recommend an approval.
Hey, wait, 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 wait.
And the city council should pass the ordinance.
Hold on. We're going to be quiet, or the room is going to get cleared. So, please give each speaker the right to speak. Mr. Hammer?
Yes. Good evening. My name is Bernard Hammer. I'm an attorney for almost 50 years, and I represent a property owner in Evanston. I've submitted a case, Evans versus Licensed Appeal Commission of the City of Chicago, cited as 95 Illinois appellate, second, 121, a 1968 case, which was against the City of Chicago in a licensing situation where there was prostitution charged, and as a result of the charge, they revoked the licensee's license. However, when it went up on review, the appellate court affirmed the trial judge and said that they could not revoke the license of the businessperson because they had no knowledge of the prostitution. Now, you have an ordinance here where you are going to punish property owners and fine them if they have a tenant that violates some standard in Evanston. Now, that is violative of all sorts of constitutional provisions, one of which is that you're innocent until proven guilty. And if you're not guilty and somebody else is guilty, you should not be punished and fined for somebody else's malfeasance. And that's what you're doing if you revoke somebody's license to rent their property.
Thank you, Mr. Hammer. I need you to wrap up.
Okay, I'll wrap up with that, and I'll see you next time.
Thank you. Thank you very much.[1386.33][1386.33](Applause).
Is this $500,000 from this ordinance going to be put into the 2013 budget? I asked that once before, didn't get an answer. Other item, this Robert Crown proposal is so screwed up, it's pathetic, and I don't have time to even get into it, but everybody better be aware it's millions of dollars of mistakes. Finally, are we going to have the same lie about the tax increase, the 8% that we had last time? And one final item, since I'm very short tonight, over 20 city employees apparently have missed use medical benefits of non-qualified dependents. This was basically brought up a couple weeks ago in a meeting, costing the taxpayers over $200,000. I would like to know what -- if these employees are still working here. And also, you know, because basically the issue is if you have employees that are dishonest, they're inspecting your buildings, they're doing all kinds of things, they're handling your money. So, I'd like to know what the city's really done about that. Thank you.
Thank you.[1447.21][1447.21](Applause).
Thank you. Next is Stuart Cleland, Padma Rao, BK Rao, and Chester Liddell.
Good evening. I'm Stuart Cleland. For the past 24 years, I've owned and lived in the house at 2145 Maple Avenue, right over there. I support the proposed licensing ordinance, and I urge the council to approve it. It bears repeating that the ordinance was drafted and fine-tuned by a rental unit licensing committee that included Aldermen, landlords, residents, homeowners, students, and city staff. All sides were represented. All sides were heard. It was truly an example of democracy in action. The committee forwarded the proposed ordinance to your planning and development committee, which voted unanimously in favor of the legislation. The licensing ordinance that is now before you is a thoughtful step forward that will improve the quality and safety of life of renters in the city. Please support it. Thank you for your time and for your service to the City of Evanston.
Thank you.[1524.03][1524.03](Applause).
Padma Rao, 2246 Sherman. My comments were approved by my attorney. The city posted on its website a link to the YouTube video for the October 1st council meeting, thereby holding out that video as the complete official verbatim record. But the video omits the visual display and sound for much of citizen comment. City officials were made aware of these omissions from the official record during citizen comment itself. All three people who spoke at citizen comment were still in the room when the defects were found, so we could have immediately repeated our comments and made the official record complete and accurate. But city officials denied us any opportunity to correct the defects in the video record. On Thursday, I gave the city clerk's office a letter with written copies of the comments read by Mom and I during citizen comment at the October 1st council meeting. I reiterate that our comments should be included verbatim in the citizen comment section of the minutes for the October 1st council meeting. I believe that every member of the public has the right to know exactly what happens at council meetings, even if they can't attend in person. I submit that city officials have an absolute duty to promptly correct defects in the video record, failing which the minutes should include a verbatim recital of the omissions from the video. To do otherwise leaves the public to wonder what was omitted --
Mr. Rao, you need to wrap up.
To do otherwise leaves the public to wonder what was omitted from the official public record and why public officials fail to correct the record.[1612.61][1612.61](Applause).
It won't take me more than one minute, so.
Go right ahead.
BK Rao, 2246 Sherman. My comments were approved by my attorney. I think taxpayers may wonder why the council decided to have a meeting on a federal holiday. I think taxpayers wonder more about what happened to citizens comment on the video for last Monday's council meeting. If there was a technical malfunction causing citizen comment to be inaudible on the video, then the three citizens who spoke were still present in the council chamber and could have repeated their comments. Alternatively, their comments in their entirety should have been made part of the minutes for the October 1st city council meeting. Since neither of those things seems to have happened, I believe that the city's record keeper has a lot to explain, and I shall return very soon.[1687.71][1687.71](Laughter) (Applause).
Thank you. Next is Chester Liddell, Matt Doherty, Steve Monachelli at 1615 Ridge, and Albert R. Carrillo.
Yes, I'd like to thank you for --
Lift it up. Yeah, it should be.
I'd like to thank the real estate company for -- I'd like to thank the real estate company for getting in touch with us, let us know exactly what the city council was involved. But I think that we, you know, you're catching us in between. You're going to find before we can have the due process to get rid of the rental people. So, you're causing more of a problem than you're causing safety and health. I mean, you're causing a rift between the people who want to live here, you know. You're not helping us, you know, to have a community. So, you know, you're the judge. You know, you're supposed to be the judge. Give us a break. I'm with Miss Payden. I'm going to look into it and see if I can help. 58 years I've been here, so, yeah.
I do need you to wrap up.
Let's get it right.
Okay.
Let's get it right.
Thank you.[1795.91][1795.91](Applause).
Madam Mayor and Council, it's Matt Doherty. I live at twenty-one twenty-two A Maple. I would like to speak in support of the licensing, and really, I'm, I agree with Mark Beam, and I will just add to that language that's already come up this evening. This would fill a gap, and it becomes something that can be enforced, and I think those key elements improve the safety, and it gives us neighbors something that can, we can believe in, renters something they can depend on, and it actually benefits the landlords because there's a baseline now that everyone can look to and say, this is something that we all agree to, and it improves the quality of life in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Stephen Monachelli. I live at sixteen-fifteen Ridge. I was also lucky enough to be one of the members on the committee that oversaw the revisions of this legislation. Thank you, Mayor Tisdale, for allowing me to serve. I would like to speak in support of this legislation. As a student and as a renter, this is something that we fundamentally believe, and as a representative of students on student government, this is something that we fundamentally believe will help our conditions living in Evanston. Not all landlords are bad, not all living conditions off-campus for us are bad, but there are occasional bad apples, and as has been said earlier, this would provide a mechanism that will allow us to have a check on fundamentally poor and unsafe living conditions. Financially speaking, we understand that as renters, this is likely to, the burden is likely to be passed down to us, and it is a minimal burden, we are willing to bear it, and I support this legislation, even if it is sent back to staff for revisions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I live at thirteen-twenty-four Madison Street. I'm the landlord, I just have one rental flat downstairs. I don't oppose a licensing law per se, but this law is unbelievable. I mean, you, you do realize that tenants also have legal rights, and you want to put a tenant out on the spot without any advance notice? I mean, this is unbelievable. This is like a totalitarian government. I mean, just unbelievable. And then fourteen thousand dollars a week, seventeen thousand dollars in the second week? Are you insane? I mean, this, this is like something from another world. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ash Nisan at twenty-six forty-three Lawndale, Albert H. Bowen, Larry Hirsch, and Stanley Weiss.
Good evening. Thank you. Yes, I'm an Evanston resident for some dozen years, and I'm a licensed real estate broker here in Evanston on Central Street, and I oppose the legislation on the grounds, personally as a broker, but also on behalf of several of my clients who are investors who buy real estate and hold, have holdings here in Evanston. They, if, if the idea here is to increase the quality of living for the tenants and the neighbors, there are existing ordinances that achieve that goal. We'd be very happy if people just enforced those ordinances that already exist, like, you know, have, have, the property standards ordinance is, is a really good example of one that, that if it were enforced, would improve the quality of, of living of the tenants and the, and the neighbors. Also, if the point is to, to gain additional revenue, well, if, if you drive away prospective investors, then your revenue's gonna kinda go away too, isn't it? So it doesn't make sense from that perspective either.
I do need you to wrap up.
Thank you. It's a, it's a fair place for me to stop. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Albert Bowen, and I have lived in Evanston for sixty-five years, and I bought a couple buildings in South Evanston down there, started working with the neighborhood organization down there. Believe me, if we improved the neighborhood without this ordinance. Now, when I started working with the neighborhood down there, we used to have a problem with the city. A lot of you aldermen, I'm sure you weren't here when we had the problem. The alderman, I meant, the city used to say we didn't have no bad buildings in Evanston. We knew we had one, but they did not move on it. I still remember when they say, "We don't have no game problem." I don't know what happened, but we got one heck of a game problem now. But I was on the committee. I was against it then, I'm against it now. I got a five-unit building, I got one vacancy. Now I got one tenant, been there for ten or fifteen years. Now the father left the household, now the kids, but like this when they moved in, now they're like this, and now they're getting me a pain in my rear. Now, if something happens here to come along and say, "I gotta get rid of them with one vacancy," then I gotta get rid of this tenant. I've lost two of my buildings. I'm trying to sell the other one to show itself now. Now the city come along and say, "No, you gotta get rid of this bill, this tenant." What am I gonna do?
I need you to wrap up.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Hirsch.
Good evening, everyone. After four years, the city of Evanston only inspected sixty-eight percent of the rental properties. Don't you think that a third of the rental properties that you didn't inspect are the offenders in the problem of the homeowners here that are complaining they want the ordinance? They don't have any rental units, that's why they're complaining, they don't wanna see any other people coming to Evanston.
And next is Brendan Saunders.
I'm Stanley Weiss. I've lived in Evanston for thirty-five years, and Mayor, thank you for having me here, and members of the council, thank you. But I would like to ask a couple of major questions, and the first one is, how will this ordinance help the people of Evanston? Will it reduce rents, or will it increase rents? Everything that goes into managing an apartment building enters into the cost stream. If you raise the costs, you're gonna reduce the profits and reduce the value of the properties involved. Secondly, has anyone considered how this ordinance will impact property values in Evanston as a result of those increases? Next, has the city attempted to calculate the impact, or have the individuals behind the move considered it only as revenue with no regard for the consequences? Considering that a number of things in the law, conflict with state law, who is going to budget for the legal fees that are gonna be involved in fighting this ordinance? Has the city put that into the budget?
I do need you to wrap up.
I will be wrapping up shortly. I wanted to say one more thing. My wife and her mother own a building in Evanston since nineteen-eighty-three. It was, my mother-in-law is ninety-six years old, and she lives at Three Crowns in Evanston, and whatever little cash flow there is from the building goes to support her lifestyle. At age ninety-six, it's not that great. If any of you know about people who are in assisted living, it's very expensive. To have another cost in here to make the people raise their rents will simply make people move out.
I do need you to wrap up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Brendan Saunders. I'm with the Interfaith Housing Center of the Northern Suburbs. We host a contract between the city and the Interfaith Housing Center, and we work as a liaison between landlords and tenants. I have some concerns about this ordinance. I would like to know, we need clear procedure set up to protect both tenants and landlords. If a property is going to lose its license, tenants need to have a warning system. Pardon me. If a property is going to lose its license, tenants need to have a warning system, a very clear system that says, when this will happen, it may happen, and also procedures that if a property does lose its license, there are procedures for tenants to get their security deposit immediately, maybe through a loan system from the city that then the, can be paid back, however we work that out. We need to have a system set up for landlords that is very clear about the inspection procedures, maybe a laying out of offenses. If, you know, a rip screen is much different than a broken boiler, there needs to be a staggered system.
I need you to wrap up, please.
Okay. I would like to thank the city for considering and trying to improve the rental issue here, but we need to bring a larger group of citizens representing landlords, tenants, elected officials, and other community members. Thank you.
Thank you. My apologies, but I can't read your first name. The last name looks like Dyer. The address is sixteen-twenty Pittner. And after James Dyer is Joseph Resnick and Mike Morand.
My name is James Dyer. I've been living in Evanston for forty-two years. I want to know, I, I own apartment buildings, and I wanna know if the tenant, I, I see all you printed out here about your seventeen thousand and all that. That's good for you, but when the tenant doesn't pay me the first half of the month, do I throw him out in the second? Everything is all about the landlord. There's nothing about the tenants. The tenants are the one who damaged the property. And I see all you, all you're printing out about landlords. We are good landlords. We have to keep up our property according to the code. If we don't keep up with the property, it falls apart, and it's on my head to fix it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Michael Morand. I live at thirty-three-six Central Street, Alderman Tendem, I'm in your ward. I was born and raised in Evanston. In fact, I was born over here at St. Francis Hospital, and except for ten years I served in the military, I have lived in Evanston. And I, quite frankly, I feel like this legislation is a stab in my back, and it's very upsetting. For those of you who support this legislation, do you know that if you have to force your renter out, after three months, the fines will accrue to over two-hundred thousand dollars? If it's six months, and that can happen, by the way, it's over four-hundred thousand dollars. That's more than the appraised value of my property. It's ridiculous. Oh, the one thing I'll get to keep, the one thing I'll get to keep is the mortgage. Thank you. Have a good night.
My name's Joey Resnick. One thing I wanna say, at least landlords know, real estate is location, location, location. What this is, is witch hunt, witch hunt, witch hunt. Are we in Salem? Is this sixteen-ninety-two, or is it two-thousand-and-twelve? I'm confused. I was born in Evanston, I went to undergrad at Northwestern in the early eighties, I resided in off-campus housing, and now I've owned off-campus property, just two properties, and pay Evanston property taxes for nearly twenty years, and I have a wonderful relationship with my tenants. I pride myself on operating a safe, clean environment and residences to my tenants. As an alum, it keeps me connected to the university, one of the finest institutions in this free country, and the wonderful students that it produces. Not going to repeat many things that have been said, but I just wanna say, this is a mockery and a waste of time, which I respectfully say, we understand that you've put a lot of time into this.
Please wrap up.
So don't waste any more time, of your time or of ours. The resources of this community and taxpayers' money is better spent. Thank you.
Next is Dan Skammerhorn, Don Schollenberger, Arthur Brown, and Colin James.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. You've heard from me before, so I'll be brief. This ordinance came before the P and D Committee and the council in November of two thousand and seven, and at that time-
Louder.
-there were concerns, concerns enough to send it to a licensing committee. Those concerns are still there. The changes that were made by the licensing committee are, are insignificant, and the concerns are still there. You've received letters and opinions from attorneys, Interfaith Housing, et cetera. We need to send this back to the committee, we need to send this back to staff to rework it, and then come back with an ordinance that is legal and that is fair to the parties involved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Don Schollenberger, I'm with Baird &amp; Warner, and I also live at eighteen-sixty-four Sherman Avenue. I'm gonna approach this a little bit differently to what some of the other speakers have approached it, because as I've read through this, the one thing that this is going to require is the hiring of additional people to enforce. At a time when there are so many cutbacks in other areas, do, do we need to pass an ordinance which will do nothing short of become a lawyer's paradise, costing both landlords and Evanston residents, not to mention the city of Evanston, untold amounts in, in legal fees? And I, and there are so many other areas, particularly in the area of social services in recent years, that we have had to cut back, and I'm just using that as one, there obviously are others, as you all know. But we don't need to not only pass something which is not gonna help the people that it's supposed to help, but is going to cost the city money.
Don, I do need you to wrap up.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought, okay. But, so my, and final saying, I would just urge all of you to bode against this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Tisdale and council members. My name is Arthur Brown, and we own some property here in Evanston, and we rent. As I understand it, this ordinance has three parts. One is the filing of a license documentation, where you state the name of the owner, the name of the manager, contact information, and so forth. Fair enough. The second one is where you have to pay a fee. Okay, I'll go with that one. The city needs some money, I understand, that's fine. The third one, I'm sorry, it's unadulterated and plain pain that you are putting the owners into. You're holding a gun to their head by being able to revoke that license at any time that you wish. How would you like to be in a job where anybody can come to you and hold a gun to your head and tell you that they can revoke your job immediately, and that happens to be the job that you use to support your family? Can somebody explain to me what is exerting pain to the landlords is going to help the city? Thank you.
Thank you. Regina Cartwright, Priscilla Giles, Joshua Braun, and Barbara James.
Hi, I'm Regina Cartwright. I'm a Realtor, and I'm-
Louder.
I'm a Realtor, and I am a landlord. I just wanna, I don't wanna repeat everything, I just wanna say that I'm absolutely against this. We've all registered our properties, we're doing our, the best we can to keep things going, and we really just want to be good landlords and want to continue conducting business in Evanston.
Thank you.
My name is Priscilla Giles, and my grandfather-
My name is Priscilla Giles, and my grandfather was born here in 1891. I would like for my grandchildren to be able to stay in Evanston if they should so choose. The Evanston City Council, I'd like to remind you that the Evanston City Council makes decisions for the citizens of Evanston, and you say that a budget is a moral document. It makes decisions for all of its people, all of its citizens, but it falls short in many areas. Among them, low-cost housing, physically challenged people who are still waiting for a circular driveway at Fleetwood Jordan, and now an added expense to tenants on whom the new license ordinance falls. This is against all of the things that you say you would like for Evanston to be, a community that is diverse and fair. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Josh Braun. I think it's important to note that the city already has on their books registration ordinance, the landlord tenant ordinance, as well as the property standards department to deal with all the various maintenance issues that are in place. I'm not sure if another layer of legislation is really necessary. It's only going to add fees and more problems to the landlord and the community. I'd also like to point out that on many occasions, I've attended these meetings, and everyone keeps talking about how this is to affect all of the city, to handle all of the landlords, or these horrible landlords that come all over the city. And the only problem is, I walk around, I look through all these people, they are from all over the city. You have landlords here from the south side, the west side, the north side, and yet somehow the only people that stand up in favor of this are right around Fireman's Park. So I think you should really take a really hard look as to who exactly you are affecting and where the pressure is to instate this ordinance is coming from.
Good evening. My name is Barbara James. I live at 802 Colfax Street, and I was on the landlord licensing committee. And during the process of the committee, we heard so many of these same comments. Many of the due process is built in to the ordinance. And renting your property is a business. We license businesses in the city. I don't see any reason why landlords who are running a business shouldn't be licensed. And if you read the ordinance thoughtfully, you will see that there is due process. And the inspectors and the city staff have stated clearly that they will work with the landlord, but you've got to get your license first. And I hope that the, if there are going to be any further discussion on the ordinance, that the committee would be also involved in that discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Did Colin James want to speak? Next is Alan Barr, Dace Kispert, 732 Ridge, and Israel Malik at 2114 Daro.
My name is Alan Barr. I live at 732 Ridge. I own a two-flat, but I am not involved with this because not only do I live there, but I don't rent the second flat. My real interest is in the, what strikes me is the illogicality and inappropriateness of the ordinance. I'm all in favor, in certain cases, of redundancy. It's really nice when you're in a big plane that it's got a second set of brakes in case the first one fails. I have lit, I went to the Planning and Development Committee meeting on, last week, because I was interested in the process. I've listened to everything that people have said. The one question by the proponents, by the defenders, that I've not heard answered is, what could this possibly, what specific thing? I know it will make the world safer, sweeter, and better, but what specific single thing will this proposal do that isn't already enabled on the books? If Evanston didn't have such a checkered record in inspecting existing apartments, it might sound more plausible.
I do need you to wrap up.
If it is true that renting an apartment is a business and it's a license, just as my last sentence, call our registration fee a license. If you need $26, add it to the 30 we already, people already pay.
Thank you.
My name is Dotza Kispert, and I own the building 848 Ridge, which is a three-flat. I am a senior citizen. I rent historically since 1984 to students and young families. Should, by some horrible chance, I get cited with this, do you really think I am going to throw out my families with toddlers out on the street the next day? Do you think that I could pay $14,700 for the first week? I can tell you, the first time that something like this happens, it's going to be a public relations nightmare for Evanston. All the, all of the newspapers will, what will they think about our city?
My name is Israel Malik, and I, my name is Israel Malik. I own the property at 2114 Daro. It is very painful and long process to evict a tenant. I would ask of, to all those who are in favor of this ordinance, have they ever evicted a person? It takes six months to evict a person, lawyers, fees, going to the judge, and all that. How would I pay that $7,000 per week when the state tells me to leave the notice, serve the notice to the tenant, and wait for two weeks until they respond? So I would ask anybody who is in favor of this ordinance, have they ever evicted anybody? And what, when the lawsuit is filed against me for throwing somebody out, who is paying my legal fees?
Next, speaking on non-agenda topics, is Padma Rao, BK Rao, Madeline Ducrey, and
I give my time to my mom.
I think you need to speak for yourself and your time.
What? You always allowed it before. She can speak.
Nobody has done that for a long time.
The fact that they have done it at all, why change the rules now without any notice?
There's been plenty of notice. I've said this for many meetings, so please, each one of you, speak for yourself, and let's get going.
I will read half, you read half. BK Rao, 2246 Sherman. My comments were approved by my attorney. As I cited at the last council meeting, my experience with our police chief is that he treats us all with respect and serves our interests wholeheartedly, no matter what color of our skin is. Sadly, I cannot say the same about the city council. One alderman reportedly issued a developer's liar that citizens' comments don't matter. One alderman repeatedly interrupted and attacked me and my daughter, and then viciously defamed me when I objected to her abusive actions. One alderman persuaded me and my daughter to force us to listen to her, even after we told her to talk to our liar and leave us alone. And the mayor seems to be completely oblivious to her official obligations, when, like a spoiled child, she turns off the microphone on me and my daughter. And is this one minute over yet?
You're at 55 seconds.
Okay. So, much for the council. Power in the wrong hands leads to injustice, which leads to mistrust and unrest. Citizens, please think wisely. The city council does not seem to be interested in spending money-
I do need you to wrap up.
... and energies to save trees and pedestrians, or to have meaningful programs for young people, so they will not hurt each other.
Padma Rao, 2246 Sherman, continuing where Mom left off. So much for the council. Power in the wrong hands leads to injustice, which leads to mistrust and unrest. Citizens, please think wisely. The city council does not seem to be interested in spending money and energies to save trees and pedestrians, or to have meaningful programs for young people so they will not hurt each other. The council has no explanation to this day why Holland &amp; Knight represented the developer of the Kendall property against the city, when the same firm had represented the city for years and collected tens of thousands of tax dollars doing so. The council has no explanation for why the Kendall resolution was passed without any discussion or consideration of taxpayers' concerns. The council just keeps trying to silence us. So much for your fiduciary responsibility. Mom shall return.
Good evening. My name is Madeline Ducrey. I won't take less than a minute, because I've talked to the chief, and I'm going to be patient this time. But I want to say that we must do something in this town when it comes to the police department. My son was hurt, my grandson was hurt this evening in my yard. I don't like that, the way it was done. One of the officers that set back a flashback to me because of something that happened to my grandson at the park at McCormick, when I went to the human services about this, make a long story short, he used the word, they think he used the word, F-U-C-K, but he did not, it was another young man. All of these children, the majority of these children, were arrested, handcuffed at the park, because they say that word playing basketball. Now, tonight, something happened, and I asked the officer, Detective George, I'm going to say his name, because my son's, grandson's name is going to be in the paper, and his too, so let's get it over with. Detective George told me, disrespectful, and I have told chief that there are officers out here who are being disrespectful to the citizens, and I will not tolerate, and I will be back when I find out what. But for this officer, detective, to tell me-
Madeline, I am very sorry that you do need to-
Okay, I'm just going to say this, Mayor, and then I'm going to leave it alone. But I looked around. I don't see any children in here tonight, and I hope they're not looking at this park. Beep it, please. But when a officer tells me that my fucking grandson did such and such and such, he is out of order, and I want an apology from this officer. Thank you. I will be back.
Thank you, Madeline.
Carla Sutton, speaking for the landlords of the Community Alliance. I've been asked to speak not only for the landlords who are residents of Evanston, but several landlords who are not. One, our concern is, with the current laws and property standards, why do we need a license? Number two, is there any compassion sensitivity or accountability to the tenants? Is there anything that the landlords don't have to do anymore? This is a tenant-friendly city, not a landlord-friendly city. And secondly, and more important, why is it that the citizens' money, the citizen grant, has been used to identify the second, the fifth, and the eighth ward for extra property inspections? Are we the only three wards in Evanston that have absentee landlords that don't maintain their property? This is just a further continuance of the city being insensitive to people who really want to stay and live here. Thank you.
Thank you. The last two speakers are Tina Payden and James Dyer.
Why aren't you calling on me? I signed up ninth on that list.
All right, what's your name?
Godfrey.
All right, you can go after Tina Payden.
Good evening, Mayor and the city council. I'm here to speak on inspections. I was given a notice for inspections on one of the properties in the fifth ward. I called, I had an inspection two years ago, and wondered why I was being inspected again when it should be every three or more years. I was alerted by the city that if you're in a federally funded area, that you must be inspected every two years. And if that's the case, I'm not getting any federally funded money for new windows, a new roof, which I would be appreciated and help that you come in my place for inspection every two years, if I could get part of the $18.1 million for inspection. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Godfrey, you may speak, but you are not, you are not, is, you are not on the list. Is there anyone else?
I am on the list. I was number nine on that list.
Now, I'm trying to find out if there's a piece of paper like this circulating somewhere with other names on it that I don't have.
It was, I think, a yellow piece of paper.
That was going to be a P and V.
And Skammerhorn was the first hammer-
Oh, okay, you signed up for the, it's all right, you can speak, but you signed up for the Planning and Development Committee meeting, not for the council meeting. It's perfectly all right. Go ahead and speak.
Well, I would appreciate if that were made clear at the time I was at the table. I was early, so, all right. My name is Judith Godfrey. I have owned Evanston property for nearly 30 years. I currently own 914 Hinman. I'm a landlord. I'm not going to repeat what's been said here, but I think it's rather clear that it's unconstitutional what you are planning to do. And I want to remind you, the U.S. Constitution supports the premise that a person is presumed innocent until proven guilty, whereas this ordinance proposes and presumes that the landlord is guilty unless the inspection proves him innocent. And that's why you want to collect the $26. So you are reversing the basic tenets of American democracy. I also want to say that the city council needs also to pay attention to cases that have already been published. I don't know, I think your lawyers need to study what's already been done. There's a case here from 1968, which was judged that you cannot, a licensee cannot be charged with conduct over which he has no control. So whatever it is that you would cite that a landlord would be guilty for-
I do need you to wrap up.
... has to be known to the landlord. So please have your lawyers bone up on the law.
My name is Beverly Dyer, and I live at 1620 Pittner. I'm going for James Dyer, my husband, we're one.
Okay.
By law. I just wanted to state that, let me tell you, Jesus met the taxpayer, and Jesus said to him, "You ought to do right." Now, I live in this city for 43 years. I used to be proud to say I live in the city of Evanston. I used to love to say I live in the city of Evanston. But right now, at 65 years old, I just feel like Evanston is raping me as a landlord. And I also, I also feel that if I have to pay you on the third paragraph that you have here, I don't have my glasses, you know, old age, bring this, but what you're talking about, all this money, I might as well ask you to take the property and pay the mortgage.
I do need you to wrap up.
Because I just got through spending $45,000 to put a new roof on my property, because when I bought it, it had four roofs on it, and with the bad snow, I'm afraid it would cave in. You know, so you need to be more compassionate, learn compassion, and have compassion, because I believe that as a landlord, I know I'm doing the best for my tenants. If you go, if I, I can show you my tenants, I don't charge as much rent as a lot of landlords around me.
Thank you. I do need you to finish.
Yes, and I'm wrapping up, Ms. Mayor, and please forgive my manners, I didn't even say "good evening," but I'm saying it at the end. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And please, please think about this. Let us be comfortable in Evanston, and let me get back to be proud to say I live in the city of Evanston.
That concludes citizen comment, so that we can... Hello? Hello?
Madam Mayor, I would like to respectfully raise a point of order. Someone mentioned this ordinance. I am a property owner and I have tenants. I never received a copy of that ordinance.
I don't know, is it on the web, Mr. Griffin? It is on the web page.
Well, I don't have the web. My name and address are known to the Property Standards Committee, so my, and I paid my $20 to register, so you know my name and address, but I never received a copy of this ordinance.
I didn't either.
That's my point of order.
Thank you.
Take all them out, don't send it home, but they don't have a computer.
All right. In order to take care of the large number of people who are here, we're gonna move special orders of business after the consent agenda. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For those who are here who don't know what the consent agenda is, those are items that the committees have dealt with that are non-controversial in terms of everybody supporting them. At any moment, any alderman can take any item off the consent agenda, just so you know. There'll be no debate and there, anything left on the consent agenda, there will be no opposition to. So, having said that, the consent agenda is as follows. Approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting, September 18. Approval of the minutes of the special council meeting, October 1. The Administration and Public Works Committee met earlier and recommend the council's approval of the payroll through September 23, $3,077,710.58. The city bills through October 9, $6,121,870.42. And credit card payments through August 31, the amount of $133,583.23. The committee requests your approval of the tire purchase for the last three months of fiscal year 2012 in the amount of $13,000. For the 12 months in 2013, the amount of $50,000 from Wentworth Tire Service. This uses the state bid award. We ask your approval also to authorize the manager to execute a one-year contract with three one-year renewals for the tire repair and recap services in the amount of $25,008 for one year, to Wentworth Tire Services also. Next, we ask your approval to authorize the manager to execute a contract for the 2012 Evanston Water Utility Roof Replacement with L. Marshall, Inc., in the amount of $133,000. We ask your approval also to authorize the manager to execute an agreement for engineering services for the feasibility study of alternative storm water management techniques with Hay and Associates in the not-to-exceed amount of $24,946.24. Approval is requested by the City Council for the purchase of 155 trees and planting services for 50 trees from Suburban Tree Consortium in the amount of $38,864. The committee also asks that you approve the manager authorizing his execution of a contract with, for Centennial Park Lagoon Professional Design Services Project to Kettle Camp and Kettle Camp. They are at 1315 Sherman Place in Evanston, Illinois, at a total cost of $90,735. The committee recommends the council approve the city manager executing a change order, number two, to the contract for the Church Street Improvement Project in the amount of $31,590 to Landmark Contractors. This will expand the scope of the contract to include replacement of light power centers throughout the city. They have to do with streetlights. Next, we ask your approval to review and place on file the single, the attached single audit report for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2011. We ask your approval also that the attached document describing post-issue compliance procedures for bonds be adopted and placed on file. These procedures will be applicable to any bonds issued on or before, on or after, sorry, January 1, 2012. The committee requests approval of Resolution 69R12, authorizing the manager to execute a transition of service agreement with Erie Family Health Center regarding the children's dental clinic. Ordinance 109012, the city, the amends the city code that was, the city code of 2012, to create a liquor license classification applicable to craft beer breweries. If adopted, P-1 liquor licenses will be permitted to offer for retail sale their craft beer for consumption on-site or off-site. The committee asks your approval of ordinance 112012, which amends the city code of 2012 as amended, to increase the number of Class C liquor licenses from 28 to 29, to permit issuance of a liquor license to Signature Food Solutions, doing business as Chicago's home of chicken and waffles at 2424 Dubster Street. That is for introduction, Madam Mayor. I also move on the matter of 112012, suspension of the rules. The committee chair will address approval of this ordinance. Next, the committee recommends approval of ordinance 99012, which amends portions of Title 10 of the city code of 2012 as amended relating to bicycles and the use of bicycles within the city. This is for action and does not prohibit the use of bicycles in alleys. Next is, we recommend approval of adoption of ordinance 10012, which amends the city code of 1979 as amended, to decrease the number of Class C liquor licenses from 29 to 28 due to the closure of Hotel Restaurant, 2545 Prairie Avenue. We ask your approval also of ordinance 101012, which amends the city code of 1979 as amended, to increase the number of Class N liquor licenses from 6 to 7, to permit issuance to Whole Foods Market, 1111 Chicago Avenue. This is for action. The committee asks you to approve ordinance 102012, which amends the city code of 79 as amended, to decrease the number of Class O licenses from 3 to 2. Next, for action, the committee recommends adoption of ordinance 103012, which amends the city code of 1979 as amended, to increase the number of Class O liquor licenses from 2 to 3, permitting issuance to Trader Joe's East, Inc., doing business as Trader Joe's, 1211 Chicago Avenue. Next, the Planning and Development Committee met this evening and, let's see, recommends introduction of ordinance 72012, along with a plan commission and city staff. The proposed regulation changes for residential building height, dormer size, and location, half-stories, accessory structures, height, and legal nonconformities in the R1, R4A districts. This is for introduction, and the ordinance, when it comes to us at our next meeting, will reflect an amendment that the committee passed and perhaps will be addressed by the committee chair tonight. Next is ordinance 3811. I think we should probably take this off the consent agenda, and it will be addressed by the committee chair. Next, Human Services Committee met recently, and the township of Evanston Supervisor recommends the council approve the township bills, payroll, and medical payments for the month of September 2012 in the amount of $99,370.26. The Economic Development Committee has a report regarding financial assistance, which will be addressed by the committee chair because of a change. Next, Rules Committee. Rules Committee, Housing Commission, the mayor's task force, and everyone else recommends that staff, recommends the council adopt ordinance 61012, which amends the city code to establish the Housing and Homelessness Commission to place, in place of the Housing Commission, was previously introduced. This is for action. Madam Mayor, there are no appointments, and this concludes the consent agenda, and I move approval.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Seeing no one wants to discuss it, City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero, the consent agenda passes. Alderman Grover, could we have Administration and Public Works, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I move adoption of ordinance 112012, amending the Evanston city code to permit issuance of a liquor license to Signature Food Solutions, doing business as Chicago's home of chicken and waffles at 2424 Dubster. The ordinance having been introduced and the rule suspended for action tonight.
Second?
Aye.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance 112012, increasing the number of Class C licenses for Signature Food Solutions, otherwise known as Chicago's home of chicken and waffles. And Alderman Rainey, you took care of suspending the rules.
Yeah.
All right, so, City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero, the motion passes. Alderman Grover, does that complete your report?
It does, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk, could we have Planning and Development, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Ordinance 3811, amending Title 5, Chapter 8 of the city code to require the licensing of rental dwelling units. Staff recommends adoption of proposed ordinance 3811 regarding the licensing of rental dwelling units, amending Title 5, Chapter 8 of the city code to be effective July 1, 2013. The Planning and Development Committee considered and accepted the report of the mayor's rental unit licensing committee at the July 23, 2012 Planning and Development Committee meeting. This ordinance was introduced at the September 24, 2012 City Council meeting, and it is for action tonight, but I believe that Alderman Wilson has something to say.
I do, I would like to make a motion. I move that we, well, first of all, I have a couple comments. I do appreciate the great deal of work that the citizens on the committee put into the project. We spent many, many hours working together to come up with something that would address legitimate concerns that a lot of people have. Landlords have concerns, tenants have concerns, and these are legitimate concerns that will still need to be addressed. Notwithstanding that fact, there is a lot yet to be done in these areas, and with that in mind, I move that we accept and fi, accepts and file the report and the proposal that were created by the committee and that we refer this back to the city staff and take this from the agenda for this evening.
Second?
Second. Alderman Burris?
I need to recuse myself from this vote as I'm a landlord in the city of Evanston.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Do we need, any City Clerk, let's have a roll call vote.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Eight to zero.
Eight to zero, the motion passes. Alderman Fisk, does that conclude your report?
Yes, it does, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I should know, but who's the head of Economic Development?
Alderman Grover is right now.
Alderman Grover? Economic Development, please.
Come on, come on, we're not-
Everyone, please, we have city business to dis, to continue to discuss. Please talk out in the hall.
Assuming a quiet exodus from the room so that we can continue to conduct our business, the Economic Development Committee had recommended approval of facade improvements for 607 Howard, that is 607-609 Howard, and I believe Alderman Rainey may have some additional information as to this agenda item. Did you?
This is the establishment, this is the building on Howard Street, 607 to 609, that has the new bakery, the new cleaner, and I guess, a new beauty shop, of course. Unfortunately, with three stores, somehow or another, over the years, the building was configured to only have two entrances. So, two stores have one entrance and, you know, anyway, we're doing a facade rebate program here, and it's very important that this be done, and we discovered way too late that the owner had intended to save the glass in the storefronts, which cannot be done according to several contractors. So, we would appreciate it if you would support increasing the not-to-exceed amount so as to include new plate glass in the storefront.
Okay.
And that's what, why it is back here.
Is there a second for the?
Second?
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the financial assistance through the facade improvement program for 607 Howard LLC. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Congratulations, it's before 10:00 at night, and we're at call of the wards.
We have two.
Oh, we have, oh, we have orders, special orders of business.
We put them off.
Which ones do you want to?
We were going to do-
To do?
There are no action items.
All right. The next special item of business will be the pedestrian safety update. Alderman Rainey.
I was going to suggest, since there are no action items, that we could hold off on these unless there's a crying need to find out about why we use asphalt to correct sidewalk repairs.
Well, since Suzette has waited.
Okay, all right.
At least I think Suzette has waited. There, there you are.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, Acting City Manager Alliance. I'm Suzette Robinson, the Director of Public Works, and the first presentation before you, I gave out at the last council meeting, so I'm hoping that you had an opportunity to look through some of the issues. This is just an update to the pedestrian safety presentation that we've done, and we wanted to let you know our progress. And for all the school crossings, we have completed all the signage, the markings, the in-street signs, the temporary bumpouts, we should get done in November of 2012, and then the blinker signs will be installed in December. And the final item to be completed for school crossings will be the permanent bumpouts, which will happen in August 2013. The other crossings, the senior crossings, we completed everything associated with those, all the signs were completed. The park crossings, we have ordered the materials, and they should be installed by November 30. That's the flag that all the park crossings, the general crossings, the signs, will be installed by November 30. And all the markings for all the crossings were all updated and completed the end of And then this is just an update to some of the specific crossing requests that either residents or the aldermen have requested us to take a look at. Oakton and Barton, as you know, we made that a school crossing, and the last things to do at that crossing is to put the temporary crash cushions, which we will have on November 30, and the LED blinker sign. Central and Broadway- Central and Broadway, we have a seventh ward meeting to discuss that on Thursday. The Church and Wesley, the stop for pedestrian sign, the in-street sign, was installed at that location. Main and Custer, we moved the two meters to improve the pedestrian visibility and when Main Street is resurfaced, we'll look at what we can do to improve safety further and that will happen either in 2013 or 2014. Crawford and Thayer, we have submitted a CIP project to install sidewalks that will facilitate that crossing. Oakton and Hartree, we are recommending to expand the passenger loading zone on the south side of the street to allow for parents to drop their kids off on the curb on the James Park side and then we're also recommending expanding parking within James Park for about 30 to 35 spaces inside the park. Oakton and Florence, the same situation. Further down, we want to establish a passenger loading and unloading area to facilitate children being dropped off right at the park on the park side.
Excuse me, Alderman Burris has a question.
I would still like a crosswalk there. What you're talking about right now at Oakton and Florence, I've asked, requested, and there's not, there's a crosswalk at Wesley, but then there's another crosswalk going west until Dodge and that's a long way and I've asked for the crosswalk. So, I appreciate the passenger loading, but I'd still like a crosswalk there. Thank you.
Okay, in order for us to do that, we also have to put a crossing guard there because we'll end up with the same situation as we did at Oakton and Barton because if we put a crosswalk there, the kids are going to cross the street there and we have to put a crossing guard there or we're, we have to make it a school crossing. So, if it becomes a crossing, it would have to be a school crossing. So, that would require us to expand.
So, every crosswalk has a crossing guard added? I'm not sure that that's exactly true, that every crosswalk has a crossing guard. So, is there a state law that says if there's a crosswalk near so many feet from a school? I mean, I'm happy if there's a law about that, I'd be happy to have that information. So, if you could provide it, that'd be really helpful.
No, it's not a law. It was just a recommendation from Public Works that if we're going to establish a crossing adjacent to a school, an uncontrolled crossing, that a crosswalk be placed there because once we put the signage and the markings there, the kids will cross.
I think it's more than a state law, it's best practices, Colleen.
And that's, I would like to, I would like the documentation on best practice from whatever the, your professional association is in that regard. I've had many calls, emails about this particular area and the crossing and we need to find a better solution to get people across the street. And I agree that we need to do the passenger loading zone, but again, people are trying to get across Oakton and we want to find ways to do that.
There is concern that it actually makes it more dangerous for children if you put a crosswalk in and you do not have a crossing guard.
And all I'm asking for is actual documentation from professional engineering professionals, highway traffic study for that, for that information. Thank you.
Alderman Grover, did you have a question?
At Dodge and Monroe, the crosswalk was installed and ramps and signs are complete. At Main and Pittner, we installed a crosswalk there and the ramp work and signs are in the process of being completed. Ridge and Colfax, we did some traffic studies at that location and we observed eight adults crossing between 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. and we have concerns about establishing a crossing on a major arterial street when there are traffic signs within a block or two. And then establishing crossings, a crossing at this location will require the elimination of four parking spaces in a high-demand area. So, Alderman Fisk, I think you asked us to take a look at this, so if you would like to discuss it further and let, then we can, because we're not recommending a crossing at that location.
No, I understand what you say and it's just that that is the direct route into the park and the golf course and small children are crossing there. There certainly, small children aren't crossing between 6:00 and 7:00 p.m., but I am concerned about the elimination of the parking spaces. I would like you to drive also west on Colfax at that intersection. It's almost impossible to see there and so it's both a problem for pedestrians getting across the street, but also drivers actually turning north or south on Ridge.
Okay, we'll take a look at that. Grant and Cartwright Park, the residents are working on a stop sign petition as a part of the neighborhood traffic, traffic calming program. Oakton between.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Suzette. Alderman Tindham has a question.
Thank you. You know, the traffic calming issue at Grant, across from Cartwright Park, really comes from about the fact that we don't have sidewalks on the south side of the street or part of the north side of the street. What would really be our preference, we all know, is that to have sidewalks that would enable a crosswalk to a park, which would be very appropriate. The same thing goes with, going back to Crawford and Thayer, the sidewalk project there is being submitted primarily so we can create a crosswalk from the west side of Crawford to get kids and adults to get over to Lovelace Park safely. So, that's, you know, there are, we're creating an extreme situation with a stop sign when really all we want is a crosswalk and I think that, you know, but it's the easier and least expensive route at this time, but I hope that in time we can work toward crosswalks at both those locations.
Yes. The request that, for the Crawford, had been in the system, so we had already submitted that as part of a CIP project for next year, but we did not have this request at the time when we were putting the CIP project. And so, this was the least costly option and we will work towards improving to get to a crossing at that location. Oakton between Ridge and Custer, we put a general crossing will be established at the Sherman intersection by November 30th. Forest and Davis.
Alderman Fisk?
Is this going to be installed? This is going to be done? I'm going to get up and hug you because we've waited so long for this, so thank you very, very much.
This is Forest and Davis. Oh, because I'm like, you're going to hug me for Oakton? That's.
I'm hugging you for Forest and Davis. I'm ahead of the game.
You're going to hug me?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, so we will have that installed by November 30th as well. Payne and Hartree, a general crossing will be established by November 30th as well. Sheridan and Emerson, we were asked to take a look at that in.
Alderman Fisk?
You go ahead and then I'll speak.
Oh, I was just going to comment that at that location, Northwestern has indicated they have no interest in placing a crossing guard at that location.
Okay, there's just a couple of things I wanted to say. Some of you may know, I've been driving back and forth to Lake Street in Chicago to go to dog training for the past four weeks and so I spend a lot of time on Ashland Avenue. The city of Chicago has done a fabulous job of putting in the medians in the boulevards that are planted and what I've noticed, driving back and forth, is that that has cut down a lot on pedestrian crossings. And as hard as we try to keep the Northwestern students safe, they just can't quite walk that extra 200 feet over to the stoplight. And next time, now that we have ownership of Sheridan Road, next time we're going to do this, I think we should look at creating some medians that might be beautiful and attractive, enhance historic Sheridan Road, but also it just deters people from crossing in mid-block and will save lives certainly in that, in that location.
And then at Crane and Oak, we observed very limited pedestrian activity and lots of gaps in traffic that will facilitate crossing the street easily. We are suggesting that we can restrict parking to improve pedestrian visibility at that location. Thank you, Alderman Wilson. Yeah, okay. Other requests that we have, Benson, Church to Davis, we looked at a variety of options. That was just, you know, one-way southbound, modified, or maintain the existing is what we came up with for that. Dewey and South Boulevard, we have a low traffic volume. We can't, the warrants for a stop sign will not be met, but residents could request a petition for a stop sign at that location as a part of the neighborhood traffic calming program. Dewey and Washington, same situation.
Excuse me, Alderman Burris has a comment, then Alderman Holmes.
Yeah, I disagree with both of the Dewey ones, but particularly since I own a property on Dewey and live there for numerous years, you've got a lot of speeding cars going down, even the stop signs that are there, they're blowing through those. But the Dewey and Washington, it's, it's an issue for a variety of reasons why we'd like a stop sign there, is that the students that are walking from the, basically the west side of Dewey that are on Washington and going across, there aren't any sidewalks if you then try to go north on Dewey, you have to walk in the street. So, we're trying to get the kids to cross over Dewey, walk up Washington and then make basically a left on the next block up to go over to Washington School or continue forward to Pope John. We really don't want the students, we want them to cross there and continue eastward versus walking in the street over to Main Street where they'd pick up a sidewalk. So, that's a real concern at Dewey and Washington. So, if your traffic, people can relook at that with that in mind, that we really don't want our kids walking in the street. Thanks.
Okay.
Alderman Holmes?
Well, Director Robinson, Church and McDaniel didn't make our list, but I'm going to give you a hug anyway.
Okay. Well, because I answered it last time, I only brought up the new issues, that we did raise the issue of Church and McDaniel with the state and they denied placing a crossing, that is their road, because of the four lanes of traffic at that location. What I had shared at the last update is that as we, after they finished paving the road, the installation of the bike paths, we may be able to, you know, if we can reduce the traffic to two lanes, then we can have the crossing. They'll let us have a crossing across two lanes, but not four.
Right, I understand that, but my residents need to hear that.
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Suzette, the other, pardon me, Director Robinson, and I don't know if this is just, if I sent the email too late before you completed your report. For the past year, I've received a lot of feedback regarding Hartree from Dempster to Greenleaf and then from, Greenleaf from Dodge to Hartree, just the fact that there are no sidewalks along that road. So, I don't know if now is the best time to address it, but I just wanted to raise that issue. And then the other stop sign, which I know this is not major list, but I just wanted to also bring up the fact that I met last week with a group of neighbors just to discuss the possibility of putting a gas station on Main Street and there was just a unanimous voice to either move the stop sign from the Sam's Club entrance to Main and Fowler or to add an additional stoplight there to allow for residents to cross to access the shopping mall.
Okay. All right, no, and I didn't have either one of those before, but I do have your email to take a look at those items and we will do that. And then I think that's the last item is Ridge and Oakton and we have ordered the pedestrian countdown signal for that location.
Okay, maybe you're going to hug them.
Okay. And we'll have that by October 31st. And then just a brief update with regards to the safety markers, we distributed on the first day of school with police, fire, Public Works handing out stickers on the first day of school and the city manager and staff met with the District 65 superintendent and we discussed education and encouragement and also to look at parent volunteers or perhaps maintenance staff to act as crossing guards. And it was a good discussion, but no specific actions came out of that meeting, so we'll still talk about it and see if we can get something in place for the next school year. Safety flyers were prepared and placed on the website and provided to the school district for distribution to parents. And then the last item, I believe, was the speed reduction and we actually installed the 25 mile an hour signs on Chicago Avenue, Dempster to South Boulevard, on Central Street, McDaniel to Central Park, and then Oakton for the city limits to Chicago Avenue. And the temporary speed radar display, we're going to purchase four more of the movable units to help wherever we have traffic problems in terms of speeders. And that would be it for pedestrian safety, unless anybody has any other questions.
Director Robinson, thank you very much and could we skip the sidewalks? And I promise you will be first on the agenda. I will not move anything around and you will be the first special order of business. My apologies.
Not at all. Madam Mayor, have a nice evening.
Thank you very much. All right, Acting City Manager, that concludes special orders of business, I believe.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Going to discuss Robert Crown another time and so we are at call of the wards. Except, city clerk, did you have something you wish to say?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I just want to make a few things clear from some comments that were made this evening. Yes, I am the keeper of the records. Yes, I do write the minutes. I do not have a vote and I do not have control over the media response, whether video or audio, that is up to EMC. For those who demand that I do verbatim minutes, that is not required of the clerk and so I do not do verbatim minutes. No matter what happens, I give a report of what's there, who's there, what's been discussed and the decisions that were made. So, for anything to be demanding of what the minutes should hold, I go by what is already required of the clerk for the state. That's all I wanted to make clear, that I do not have any control over the media system and I just have control of my minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, city clerk. Call of the wards, beginning with Alderman Nguyen.
No report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
Briefly want to thank Madam Mayor and everyone who was in attendance at the summit last week. Appreciate that effort and I think we had a lot of good information and conversations that came from that.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
Yeah, I would ditto that too in terms of really thanking all the citizens who took the time to come out and I just want to continue to say that it is a marathon, folks, it's not a sprint, so be prepared to continue to work with us to make sure that we can get the business taken care of. Also want to say that on July 17, I believe it was, I had the occasion to celebrate the 100th birthday of Mrs. Annie Mae Parrott Quitmore and she turned 100 years old and it was a wonderful celebration and I'm really sad to say that I want to offer my sympathy to her family because she just passed away on October 4th. So, it's a sad thing for our community because she was a wonderful woman. And then to the rest of you, on next Thursday, the 18th, at the fifth ward meeting, we will have the budget team, so if anyone wants to come and discuss the budget for 2012, 2013, please come out and join us.
Thank you. Alderman Tindham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to announce that there will be a sixth ward meeting on. meeting on October 23rd at 7:00 at the Three Crown Center. There is a mailing coming out shortly to announce this. It will be, as is in the, in the Fifth Ward, a meeting primarily directed toward talking about the, the city budget for 2013. There's also two small meetings planned for tomorrow, one at 3:00 PM and one at 6:30. At 3:00 PM, we're inviting the, the merchants along Central Street between Ewing and Lincolnwood and others to come and take a look at what the city engineering and public works has planned for sidewalk improvements of that area. That's at 3:00 at the Old Neighborhood Grill. And the second meeting is tomorrow evening at 6:30 at the Presbyterian Homes, James Room. And that will be a meeting dealing with the similar topics, plus the Central Street water main and street resurfacing project that affects the entirety of the Sixth Ward, Central Street. So that's at 6:30 tomorrow night at the Presbyterian Homes. The James Room is the room above the Swimming Center at 3200 Grant. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to you and every member of our staff and every person who came, hundreds of them, to Fleet Ward last Tuesday night for really, I thought, meaningful and rich discussion about violence in our community. I look forward to the next one, and I think we'll get great attendance at the next one. I'm planning a ward meeting, and on Thursday night, I see that Alderman Braithwaite has a meeting the same night. And Alderman Braithwaite, maybe we should have combined forces on this one, just done a joint meeting. Mine will be at the Ecology Center from 7 until about 8:30, and I think I'm tapping the same budget team for our discussion, as well as our traffic engineers, who I think will help us figure out a way to reconfigure the Broadway-Poplar Central Street crossing, which is the crossing and the intersection just immediately east of the Central Street train station, where everything happens at least twice a day. So please come join me for that. And Alderman, not Alderman, Officer Ron Blumenberg will be there as well to fill us in on, on police goings on in the ward. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I kind of have a list tonight. First of all, I want to thank neighbors and the Police Department and the city of Chicago, and especially Deputy Commissioner Barbara Gressel, who runs the deleterious impact citizen hearings regarding problematic commercial establishments in Chicago. Neighbors in Chicago can, by virtue of a very short petition, I think six residents, generate a hearing in that division to discuss problems at a particular commercial establishment. And we've been supporting the 24th District, those of us in the Eighth Ward, at these hearings regarding the Howard-Hoyne Convenience Store, where in the parking lot, this is right across the street, of course, from Evanston, there have been, you know, drug deals, Evanston stings, where, you know, people have been seen shooting, guns have been recovered. And I will tell you that this is the second meeting last week in two months, and there has been tremendous improvement on the part of the activities and the shopkeepers at that location. And I have suggested to City Manager Bob Kowitz that we consider a similar process. It works famously, and the hearing officer is just tremendous and sets forth a list of rules that must be followed by the establishment. And over a period of three months, if all of those rules and goals and issues are met, then they are not referred for a license revocation. Otherwise, they are referred to a special hearing to have their business licenses revoked. And it used to only be with alcoholic beverage establishments, but now it's with all commercial and retail. That's one. Two, I want to congratulate the owners, the managers, and the neighbors, and the Police Department, the Chief of Police and Sergeant Collier in particular, and also the County Commissioner Suffronin's office, for probably a, just a classic case of resolving a problem, two problems that we thought couldn't be resolved. One was 131 Asbury, and the other was 960 Dobson. It's a corner building there. Neighbors observed all sorts of issues. Over a period of a few weeks, we resolved every single issue. The reason we were able to resolve the issues, because the landlords and the management companies were extremely supportive and listened to the complaints and followed through with the help of the Chief of Police and the County Commissioner's Office. And we, I mean, it is like the difference in night and day, these two buildings, the, the results that we achieve. And so it can be done. And, you know, anybody wants to talk to me about the details, I'll be glad to share with you. Tomorrow at 5:30, I'm taking one or more, I have one guaranteed, one or more members of the zoning committee of the Plan Commission on a tour of the Howard Tiff District, the Howard Ridge Tiff District. It seemed that at least one member of the committee did not realize that Evanston was on the east side of Chicago Avenue at Howard Street, and, and that appalled me. Just absolutely. I, how we have people on our, on our Plan Commission who are not familiar with the city of Evanston is beyond me, but I'm gonna help them, and I'm sure they'll, they'll, you know, take the education and use it wisely. On November 7, the neighbors, as we have been doing for over a year now, attend court every month at Skokie in Room 206, where the murder of dear Mr. Costulis, who was completely deaf and partially blind, was beaten to death on Howard Street for valuables totaling $10. He was on his way to work at 5:30 one morning, on his way to the L, when he was accosted by people who did that to him. So that is 9:30, and that is going to be a very important hearing because there has been a move to quash all the evidence. And we have some information that some of it might have been lost. So any, any support we can get in the courtroom that morning will be greatly appreciated. Tomorrow evening at 7:30 at the outpost is the Howard Street Business Association Monthly Meeting. Please come if you'd like to join us. I want to invite, I'm, I'm going to have a meeting on the 30th of October, of only landlords that have buildings in the Eighth Ward, rental buildings in the Eighth Ward. I do not want the Barrington Real Estate Group to be there. You're gonna have to show me proof that you have a building in the Eighth Ward in order to get in the room. And we are gonna talk through the issue of registration and licensing. It's not for tenants, it's for landlords. And we'll have another meeting for tenants, and then maybe bring you both together. But we have, we have to reach a meeting of the minds. And so anybody who is interested in coming, who's an Eighth Ward landlord, please email me, annrainey@aal.com, and I'll put you on the list. And that's the way we're gonna do it. Maybe I'll get it on the city's website. But that's gonna be October 30th, 7:30 at the Police Outpost, 633 Howard Street. And the wine bar is almost ready to open.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Burris.
First, I want to say congratulations to Family Focus for receiving the CARES Award from St. Francis Hospital. It was a really nice event last week. I also want to say congratulations to the Ridgeville Park District Foundation. They had their second annual fundraiser on Saturday night. Alderman Rainey and I were there, as well as our former Alderman Hanson. I also want to say thank you to the residents for coming to the fundraiser, as well as numerous Evanston businesses that donated to the silent auction, including a few spirits, one of our favorites, Wine Styles, another loyal company here, True Fit Gym, and even though the Fishkeg is in Chicago, they donate to a lot of events here in Evanston. So we'll consider them one of our own. And we have a Ninth Ward meeting coming up on October 17th at Reba Place Church. We'll be, as everyone else, discussing the budget and traffic and pedestrian issues. So hope to see you there.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One of the things I'm proudest of in the First Ward is that we have ongoing challenges with various institutions in our ward, but we also have a sense of humor and a, a sort of positive glass half-full approach to, approach to life and our neighbors. I want to tell you a little bit about Ms. Rosemary Papst, and how she approached the installation of a traffic signal in her front yard. This traffic signal, as you know, Rosemary appeared before us at council. O'Neill. I'm sorry, Rosemary. Gosh, oh, gosh, Rosemary Papst. I mean, Rosemary Papst, former Alderman, wonderful, absolutely wonderful woman. But this is Rosemary O'Neill. Thank you. So Rosemary O'Neill appeared before us. Oh, Rosemary Papst was also a First Ward resident, so I just, that's why I'm getting them confused. And I supported her. So Rosemary O'Neill appeared before us several times, concerned about the, the traffic signal that was going to be in her front yard with the creation of the new street east of Sheridan Road at the Northwestern parking lot. And she brought a lawyer, she dealt with the city, she told us what her concerns were. The traffic signal was installed. She negotiated with the city that there would be a tripwire install that would allow her seven seconds to get out of her driveway and into Sheridan Road, and all of that happened. And this past Saturday, Ms. O'Neill invited all of us to come to her house and have the blessing of the traffic signal. There were two priests present. There was a BMW convertible. It was wonderful weather. Ms. O'Neill rode in the convertible. The tripwire was demonstrated. And we all had a wonderful time. And the people from S.H.I.E.L.D. were there in strong support, and a lot of other residents were there as well. So I think so highly of her. She's been a resident. She moved into that house with her parents when she was, I believe, seven or eight years old. She's lived there for a very long time, the last living taxpayer on Sheridan Road between University Place and, and Lincoln Street, I think. So my thanks go out to Rosemary O'Neill, and thank you to the mayor for attending, and-
I wouldn't have missed it.
It was a wonderful time. I don't think it will ever be repeated. So I have some pictures that I will share with you if you would like.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I just want to join the, the chorus and say thank you very much for your rapid response immediately following the, the shooting. I've, I've attended the community meeting as well, and just overwhelmed by the tremendous support from our residents. And thank you to the staff who really pulled together. Just an amazing feat to, to be able to address the issue in that way, just given the amount of response we received, I thought was just phenomenal. And I also look forward to, to the next meeting. I also want to say thank you to the mayor, also Representative Robin Gabel, Representative Jan Schakowsky, for your support and participation during Manufacturing Day back on October 4th. It was just an amazing turnout, and it was a day that we really tried to promote a lot of awareness around the manufacturers that are around in the Second Ward. And we had a great level of participation from the businesses that are in the Second Ward. Folks from Evanston Township, we had representatives, national representatives from the National Federal, National Manufacturing Association, and it was just a wonderful meeting. I also want to announce to Second Ward residents that as well, Thursday, October 18th at 7:00 PM at the District 65 Building, we plan on hosting our regular Second Ward meeting. You'll have an opportunity also to hear from city staff regarding our budget process. We'll also hear from Chief Addington with the Evanston Police Department and Officer Reggie Napier, reporting on crime trends in the ward. As well, we'll also hear from our city youth staff, Mr. Kevin Brown and Mr. Nathan Norman, who will be updating our residents on the activities of the city and are, in announcing the Youth Career Path Program, Young Adult Career Path Program. It's always a mouthful. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson, do you have a motion?
I do. Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, ILCS 120/2A, I move that the City Council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding litigation and minutes. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are five ILCS 120/2A, C-11, and C-21.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. The ayes have it.